Scheduled Evan City Council meeting for Monday, November 3rd, 2025. My name is Mark Clark. I'm the mayor. I'm going to call the meeting order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Mayor Protempleka?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Neal?
Present.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Here.
Councilmember Delaney?
Here.
Councilmember Fair?
Here.
All right. Next item on the agenda is audience participation. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address city council on any item that is not on the agenda or of a public hearing? If so, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All right. See you in none. All right. Next item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Madam Clerk, any changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor.
All right. I entertain a motion. All right. I have a motion and second to approve the agenda. Go ahead and submit your vote. And that motion carries seven, nothing. All right. Next item on the agenda, item number six, consent agenda. Item number six A, approval of the October 21st, 2025 city council meeting minutes. Item number six B, consideration of ordinance number eight fifty-two dash twenty-five for the acceptance of real property outlets N and O, liberty draw, second filing, first reading. And entertain a motion on the consent agenda. All right. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Go ahead and submit your votes. And that motion carries seven, nothing. All right. Next item, new business, item number seven A, public hearing. Consideration of resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty-five approving an animal variance application for 2533 Port Street. I'll call the meeting, uh, public hearing, open up the public hearing, hear from staff.
Good evening, Council. Megan Paisley, Deputy City Clerk. I'm bringing before you tonight the consideration of resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty-five approving an animal variance application for two five three three Port Street. The City Clerk's Office received an animal variance application for this property on October 1st, 2025. Evans City Code, specifically Chapter 6.4.300 subsection K, dictates that it is unlawful for any one household to keep, maintain, harbor, or possess a combined total of more than four pet or fowl animals. The applicant, George Rojas, currently possesses nine animals at his property, seven dogs and two fowl animals, and is therefore seeking this variance in order to keep possession of them. A more detailed list of the animals in question can be found in the resolution documents under exhibit B, specifically page forty-seven in your packet. Per the Chapter 6 code, city council has the authority to grant the requested variance, grant a variance with a lesser number of animals than in the request, or deny the variance overall. City council shall base its decision on the following criteria. One, the variance is in harmony with the intent and purposes of this chapter, Chapter 6, and with other relevant city ordinances. Two, the variance will not result in damage to adjoining properties, nor an unreasonable amount of noise or smell, and will not otherwise be materially detrimental to the public welfare. And three, the variance is appropriate, given the size, shape, topography, and/or location of the property upon which the animals are to be kept. Please be advised that council may impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations as it deems appropriate for the protection of persons and property upon the granting of any such variance. If any of those conditions are violated, or the variance constitutes as a nuisance, the city council may revoke the variance granted. For the record, the following findings have been determined in compliance with Evans Municipal Code. The applicant submitted the animal variance petition to the City Clerk's Office on October 1st, 2025, and paid the associated submission fees. The applicant submitted a letter explaining why the variance should be granted, along with two additional letters of support to the City Clerk's Office on October 1st. The notice of public hearing on this matter was posted on the property on October 22nd and published in the Greeley Tribune on October 24th. Therefore, notice was successfully published at least ten days prior to the hearing date. The public hearing is being held tonight on November 3rd, 2025. At this hearing, the applicant will have the opportunity to be heard regarding matters related to the application. In conclusion, staff finds that the applicant has submitted all the necessary information for an animal variance application, and the applicant, George Rojas, is in attendance to answer any questions posed by council.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff and/or of the applicant? If so, please use your request to speak button. I don't see any questions.
I have a question.
Well, please, okay. Councilmember Delaney?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor. So I have a question. I have in front of me a police report that was filed. And it, uh, references, um, two other cases that, um, but they're redacted. And it seems like they are related to noise. The previous year, we had received several barking dog complaints. Um, and each complaint was referenced, a large number of dogs, up to seven at the residence. Each Evans PD responded, each time Evans PD responded out. Do we have any information about those cases?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Randy Darlin, Chief of Police. Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Randy Darlin, Chief of Police. My CSTs investigated these calls. We have had multiple calls for barking dog in and around the area. None of those calls for service were founded. Some of the calls were unable to be unfounded in the term that we were unable to find evidence that there was a barking dog in each one of the inspections that the CSTs went to. They found no evidence of barking dogs. Upon this variance request, my CSTs did an inspection at the premise, interviewed the residents, interviewed the veterinarian for the animals in question, and did a thorough investigation and review of the variance itself, as well as the properties, and determined that we have not had any founded criminal activity, founded calls for service related to barking dogs directly relevant to this particular residence.
Okay, thank you. Um, probably this is a question for, uh, our city attorney. So the first requirement is that the variance is in harmony with the intent and purpose of this chapter with other relevant city ordinances. I guess my, let's start with a question of the applicant. Do you know how large your yard is by any chance?
I don't specifically know the, the actual, we have a corner lot, so it's, it's, it's larger than most, um, most houses on the street. If I may reference back to the police report, we paid for their police report also, so we can obtain it. And, um, the one who actually called the complaint is actually a nephew of ours. It's just a big family. There's just a lot of bad blood. Um, my oldest nephew left the house as soon as, after he turned eighteen. And two days after is when he called the police, they called to make a complaint. And specifically, the one who actually called and made the phone call to the police department, we actually took care of his dog for about a year while he was on military leave. So I don't understand why, that's where you can kind of see the discrepancy there. He was really, um, concerned about the welfare of the animals.
So I guess I'll rephrase my question. In, uh, in six oh, six point oh four point three, there is an exception of the four animals that's guaranteed, which is if you have a, um, acre of land, and, um, then you can have up to twelve fowls. But you have to have at least a hundred feet of open area located at least fifty feet from any residence. I guess for Cody would, or not, I'm sorry, for, uh, Mr. Lyman, is that including the resident itself, or is that just other residents in the area?
Councilmember Delaney, are you asking about the number one part of the criteria for a variance?
No, I'm sorry. I'm asking for, before that, in section K, which is what we're discussing, there is a, a carve-out that if you have an acre or more of land, you may have a total of twelve fowl animals, provided an open area of at least one hundred square feet per animals provided, and such open area is at least fifty feet from any residence.
That's correct, and four pet or fowl animals in any other household.
Yes. So that, that residence requirement, the fifty feet from any residence, is that including the residence of the person who owns the animals?
It appears to be another residence, from any residence, business, or other building intended for human habitation.
Okay, um, so I guess then back to you, because again, I'm trying to go to the harmony with the intent and purpose of this chapter. So we already have a different cutout that says, hey, if you have an acre of land, which I don't know if you do or not, but, um, but again, we're just trying to get into the ballpark. Do you think that if you cut off fifty feet from all your neighbors, you would have nine hundred square feet of, of open area for your animals?
I believe so. Nine hundred square feet. Actually... I, I don't know what our backyard actually is, sir.
Fairly large, but don't know the exact square footage.
So, uh, Chief, you said that some of them were not found to be founded, but were also not found to be unfounded. Is that correct?
There wasn't enough evidence to support that I could unfound a barking dog complaint, right? Every time our CSTs went to the property, they found no evidence of a barking dog. But that's a moment in time and place, right? So, um, based on the investigations that were conducted, contacting the residents, contacting the complainant, there were dogs that they could actually hear barking that weren't related to the residential property on at least one of the visits. So to say that we could unfound it, no, I couldn't say that. But to say that we found nothing that led us to believe that illegal conduct or that the barking dog was coming from that residence, we found no evidence to support that.
Okay. Um, and then, I guess final question for the applicant. Our, our, uh, letters are redacted from your, um, from, from the two letters of support for you. I don't want to know the names. That's not a concern. I was just wondering, um, who, uh, like, what relation to you are the people who submitted those two letters?
They're very longtime friends. Um, we actually, uh, one of the letters, um, I actually have another letter here. If you guys would like to see it, it's from a direct neighbor right next to us. We also have another neighbor in support of us who lives right, right next to us here as well, to attest that there is really no noise complaints coming from our residents. All our dogs are inside dogs. If they're outside, they're, they're going out to use the bathroom. For, you know, we go to play with them. If, you know, if they start barking, every, the house behind us and next to us, because we only have two neighbors, um, directly, uh, next to us, they have, everyone has dogs. So, um, anytime they go to the fence or anything like that, we, we bring them right in. We, we, we're really cautious on, you know, everyone else's time. We understand people work from home as well, but all our dogs are inside dogs. There's, there's really no noise complaints that we've, that we've had.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Um, Drew, I have a question, because it on, in the, um, it doesn't indicate anything about ESA animals. This is four per household. How would an ESA animal affect that?
Frankly, I'm not sure about the, the number. I have not heard of that, where there were multiple animals that were ESA animals in a household. I don't know that that's the case here. And so what should be considered is the application and, uh, the request, the information provided by the applicant and staff. That is not a relevant part of this statute.
I was just wondering, just because it doesn't indicate, um, in the ordinance at all. It just gives a number, but it doesn't provide any, like, variables or other, like, opportunities as far as owning an animal. I was just curious if, how that would land in that specific, not indicating it's a part of, like, the question. Just because reading the letter and seeing the, there's, um, I don't know what your household size is, but there are specific medical concerns and factors within that specific letter of support. And I was just kind of curious how that would.
Normally, that's under the ADA or Colorado's version of the ADA. And, and in someone's household, that would not, uh, apply in how our ordinances, um, apply throughout the city. So it would be a public accommodation or a building or a service where we would have to make some accommodation in, with, with service animals, but that's not, not related to this because it's in the person's household.
I was just curious, because it, yeah, that is unique. Okay. Um, what is your household size? I was just curious.
Just me, my wife, and our two kids that we are raising, niece and nephew.
And then, um, kind of going, um, based off, uh, Councilmember Delaney's question, because like your backyard, just to get an idea, does your house, like, fit in the backyard? Just to get, gauge, uh, a size?
Pretty close.
Pretty close, okay.
We have a fifteen-foot pool on one side. I built a huge kennel out of steel on, on the other side. And, um, I believe, um, the officer's going to attest to, to the pretty good size of yard that I do have. One of, one of the animals stays downstairs, well, not stays downstairs, but he's got a whole basement to himself, to, because he's so close to my nephew. They, they all have their own areas. They're, they're pretty much free roaming.
They're all senior dogs. They're senior dogs that have come from really bad situations. And we're just asking you guys to let us finish doing what we need to do with them. We have one that's probably going to be gone probably in the next couple of months. She's got cancer in her mouth and she's barely walking and stuff.
Thank you.
Councilmember Delaney again?
Yeah, sorry. Just something I just kind of caught on to. Um, I'm a little confused. The work session says that, uh, they have eight animals, but then the resolution says they have nine animals. Can I get clarification on?
So the staff report says they have nine, and the resolution says they have nine. I think the letter itself dictated that it was, it was six and two.
Yes.
That came from when they came in and applied on October 1st. We went ahead and licensed four animals, since you're allowed to have four animals. So we had those four. Um, and then I reached out, um, to get the information on the other animals, and they gave me the four other animals listed. Then there was one animal in question that I believe they're saying is Sadie, which is the one on her deathbed that they did not originally include.
And then they asked us to include it because she's still here. So it's two birds. It's a lovebird, a parakeet, and then the dogs.
They each have their own separate cage. They're in a separate room. They've seen that. We, it wasn't, um, when the community services officers came to, to our residence, there was no time for us to stage anything. Um, they were waiting outside. We welcomely let them inside the house. So there's no way for us to kind of do anything. They, they seen how clean our home was, our backyard. We, we keep up with all their medical needs, um, out of pocket. We don't ask for assistance. Everything is just done straight from us, from what we can help.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal?
Yes, Drew. I have a question for Drew. Can we make, um, if we were to accept this as a council, can we make, uh, stipulations that, uh, as the, uh, senior animals pass, that they cannot add additional animals? Or, um, when they, when they get down to less than, than the required ordinance amount of four, then they could maybe add additional animals if they wanted to?
Yes, Councilmember Neal, that is something that Chief Darlin wanted to make sure of for enforcing this. And that's why the animals are specifically named and described. And the police department knows how to identify each animal. And so when they become in compliance with the standard ordinance, then there will not be animals that are added, uh, under, under this variance. That's correct.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. See no other questions from council. Since this is the public hearing, I wish, I would ask if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak for or against this item, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Just because I showed up, but, uh, I do live across the street for a moment. They seem like a very loving family. My name is George Mendiolo. I live at twenty-five thirty Port Street. I'm here in Evans as well. Whenever the dogs are in the front, they're always loving them, playing with them. You know, the kids are always taking them for walks, and it seems like they really do care about the animals a lot. So, you know, that's really all I have to say. But yeah, they really are a loving family, and they do love their animals. It looks like they really do take care of them. And there is lots of dogs in the neighborhood, and their dogs are actually small compared to some of the dogs around the neighborhood that are really big and bark really loud and aggressively. So that could be where some of the barking is coming from. Like I said, they're always on leashes. Some of the dogs in the neighborhood run around free, you know, in front of the, the neighbors' yards and, but you know, it's a pretty well-established neighborhood, and nobody really seems to, you know, complain too much. So just thought I'd give you my train of thought, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
Guys, Laura Spear, forty-twenty Empire Street. These aren't my neighbors. I do appreciate them, um, caring for their dogs, uh, as, as well as what it seems like. But I just wanted to, um, add to, uh, the public hearing, since, you know, this is the forum to talk. I'm not for or against. I just wanted to, um, actually state what Mr. Neal had said. I'm worried, I'm a little worried about setting a precedence for variances, especially over on, you know, my end of town, where we're kind of a little lax on the ordinances anyways. But that's your guys' decision for, for the variance. I would not want to ask people to get rid of their animals, but I would also suggest, um, having a, a, worked into the variance that, um, they, they, if you so desire for them to keep the animals that they have without replacing them until they get underneath that four animal threshold. And then, um, let me see, what other point did I have to make on that? I didn't, um, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't setting a precedence for people to acquire, you know, uh, twenty animals in their backyard and then, uh, be able to just come in here and get a, a variance, um, after that. So, um, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Laura. All right. Anybody else? All right. See you in none. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and open up for council discussion. And if you have anything, just please use your request to speak on this. All right. Councilmember Delaney?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
It's doing that to me, too.
So we heard from, uh, Laura Spear, and, um, that is one of the things that I am, uh, very concerned with, is what precedent we set. I'm concerned that when the letter was written, there was only eight animals, and then there was nine animals. I'm concerned that there were calls to the house about noises, and we couldn't find, nothing was founded, but that concerns me. And I think that it's not inside the, uh, spirit of the, um, ordinance, which is the first hoop that needs to be crossed in order to, uh, for a variance to be approved. And quite honestly, the thing that that I don't know how, how to deal with, but the, the letter doesn't address the three things that need to be addressed in order to, in order to have a variance. There are the, the three very specific things, which is the variance is in harmony and intent of the purpose of the chapter and other relevant city ordinances, and the variance will not result in damage to adjoining properties, nor unreasonable amount of noise and smell, which will not otherwise material, um, detrimental to the public welfare. And the variance is appropriate, given the size, shape, and topography, and/or location of the property on which the animals are to be kept. When, as I read the, uh, the letter, um, which is the applicant's form, forum to tell us, hey, this is why we meet those three criteria, all I read into it is, you know, we're good, our, our dogs are good, and please don't take them away from us. So I guess I, at this point, lean towards not accepting the variance as is. What, but what I do find absolutely compelling in their filing is the fact that, you know, saying no and just expecting them to get rid of five animals tomorrow may not be the best idea. So what I would suggest, and Drew can tell me if this would be appropriate or not, is that we could say, we will give you a variance on these specific animals for one year. And in that time, please go out and find loving families that can take care of these animals. I yield my time.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Delaney. Councilmember Crabtree?
It's a tough one. Um, I appreciate the family's care and responsibility. But this ordinance is in place to protect health, safety, and the fairness of the city, uh, citywide. Rules need to apply equally to everyone. This is not the intent to punish, but to keep a clear, manageable standards for the whole community. I feel that, um, I'm not in favor for this, um, ordinance for variance in any capacity. I don't feel that we should, uh, have our techs going out to make sure that they're following up, to make sure that the rules are being followed. This is a standard that's been set for our city, for every resident. And I agree with, uh, Councilmember Delaney, that I do agree that we just can't cut it off immediately. I think a year is a little bit too long. But tomorrow is too fast. What that looks like, I would say between ninety days and six months to do. And that's all I've got. I yield my time.
All right. Councilmember Neal, I'll let you go before me.
Well, I'm not in favor of maybe setting the precedence on this either. I think, uh, Councilmember Delaney's, uh, has got kind of a compromise solution, maybe. It may not be what the family wants, but it, it may, it, it would give them an opportunity to try to do something with the animals. I can feel for them, but I received a lot of complaints about bar, uh, people with barking dogs and what can be done with it over the last seven years. So, um, I, I really can't go along with trying to, uh, maybe establish a precedent. I've already got a house behind me with five dogs that, uh, are barking at, uh, three, four o'clock in the morning. So, uh, I definitely don't want to do that.
Okay, Mark? Great. Thank you, Councilmember Neal. Appreciate it. All right. So I am in agreeance with what was already stated, um, by Councilmember, uh, Delaney Crabtree and Councilmember Neal. I don't want to set a precedent as well. Because if we allow one variance, then another applicant can come in and ask for a, a variance as well. And if we grant one for them, we would have to continue to grant others as well for the, for the same reasons as well. I agree that two, a year is too long. I agree with you, Councilmember Crabtree, that within ninety to ninety days to six months is about a good, adequate time period. So I would be willing to even split the difference and go four months. That's just what I think. But yeah, I, I can't right now, just because of the way the ordinance is read and set a precedent throughout the community, that, uh, we're all exceptions for this. I'm glad that they take care of their animals. I'm glad they're respectful of it, and the neighbors don't have any problems. But I just don't want to set a precedence in the city that we're going to allow variances for animals, you know, when we have that code in place. If we, as a council... If we, as a council, at a later time, want to look at making some modifications to it, we can do that then. But as of right now, the way the ordinance is written and the way it is, is we're gonna just keep, I'm in favor of keeping it the way it is. Councilmember Fair?
I am in favor of the variance. I understand the concerns with setting a precedent. I totally agree with that. And I do agree that there does need to be conditions for the reduction in the number of animals. I don't agree with the timeframe, though. I think it should be at the expiration of the animals. We've only heard from one neighbor in this instance, and they were in favor of this. I do think that it meets the spirit of the code. For pet or fowl animals is pretty loose. And as far as I've seen it, the applicants for this have been very cooperative with the police department. They've allowed, on their own voluntary basis, the inspection of their home. They didn't need to do that. They have submitted for registering and licensing their animals. There are thousands of animals in Evans that are not registered, thousands of them. So I think that they've taken all the steps to comply with the city. And as far as we've heard from the police department and, and the one neighbor, they are taking good care of these animals, and I don't see any need to remove them from the home. But out of concern for setting that precedent, I think we definitely do need to have conditions if we do support a, support this to reduce the number of animals without addition of them.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I echo Kyle. I agree that there needs to be conditions, but I also feel that they have also complied and worked with our police department, and you know, they have a good reference from a neighbor indicating that they are good with their animals. I think giving a timeframe for animals, especially because they're like literally family members, that's, I can't see ninety days, six, six months, a year. That's difficult. As is, we have a humane society, like that is overflowing with animals, and this family wants to keep them. And they have a clean space for them. They're well-maintained. And so I, I'm in favor of moving this forward. And again, in the future, if we want to revisit it, put conditions, and figure out what's the best way to move forward, I, I am for that. I, I don't want to set precedents, but at the same time, in this instant, I, I just don't see giving a timeframe for someone to get rid of an animal.
Thank you. Mayor Portman?
So for me, I would be with you and Councilmember Crabtree. Nine, eight, nine is a lot of animals, and we've all seen the size of our yards, our houses. Mine is extremely small. I have one dog, and his barking can drive me nuts when he gets out there. And I'm sure my neighbors are like, shut up, you know, when he is out there for a few minutes. I'm not saying that their dogs are always barking, always a nuisance or anything like that, but it does get to a point where people can hear those things going on. And it doesn't have to happen right when the police are there, or right when someone's there for an inspection, or a neighbor, or whatnot. So that aside, I am glad they are offering a good home to these dogs and that they are taking care of them. I'm very glad to hear that. But I cannot see nine animals in such a limited space. Maybe it's not that limited, but I know that Evans overall, our yards are not that big. So for me, it's, it's hard to say yes, just let it go. So for me, it would probably be more along the lines of what Councilmember Crabtree and the mayor stated, which is thirty, or ninety days to six months. But I cannot see letting it just go, continue on, because like they said, you know, I know we're gonna talk about maybe some caveats or whatnot, but what's to say that there's not another animal in need, and they bring that animal in understandably, but unfortunately, we can't do that for everybody, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, question for you, Drew. So it sounds like, just from my telling, just from listening, that right now, if we were to take a vote, it probably would be five to two, two to deny the variance. We haven't voted yet. However, with that being said, there seems to be some consensus that we'll need to come up with in order to come up with a timeframe, if any. Should we go ahead and do the vote first, or go ahead and set a timeframe and then vote?
Continuance.
You could do a vote on approving or denying the variance. The statute specifically empowers City Council to approve or deny. It also states that the City Council may impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations as it deems appropriate for the protections of personance and property upon granting of any such variance. That would include, of course, a time limit. And so, and remembering Bob's rules, there's a motion, and then a second. The person who makes the motion does not have to support their motion. If they said, I move to, you know, approve variance with a one-hundred-and-eighty-day time limit, just for example, doesn't mean you have to vote yes on that. Then there needs to be a second and a vote. So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to have a motion to either grant, or there are any other members of the City Council to, to, to grant the variance in a second, and then if that passes, but subject to conditions in another motion, that, that's how, that could happen in two parts.
All right, we'll do it that way. All right. So let's go ahead and vote. Sorry.
Give me some more clarification.
Okay.
So we're voting with, because you lost me on that.
Oh.
So we're going to vote with a variance on time.
If you, if the motion is made.
Right.
So I would have to say, and this is not an actual motion right now, this is an explanation. I would have to say something like, I move to make the variance with the stipulation that the full variance only lasts for four months, whatever.
Got it.
Whatever timeframe we would think appropriate.
But Councilmember Crabtree, what I was trying to do is separate approval of the variance at all in the first instance with the conditions. If it doesn't pass, then there would be no reason to consider conditions. And if it passed, then there could be a second discussion about what condition to place on it. So I offer those as examples.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, good. All right. So with that being said, do we want to make the motion for, with the timeframe, or?
I think we should make a motion with the timeframe.
Okay. What timeframe are you?
Hundred-and-twenty days, four months.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
All right, sounds good. All right, I would entertain a motion with that.
Okay, hold on, because the language is already set in there, so what is the motion?
It'd be a motion to, let's see, we're gonna deny, it sounds like, well, it would be, it would be grant, grant the variance, well, actually, no, it would be deny the variance, but allow them four months to rehome the animals.
I think what it would be is to grant the variance subject to compliance with the code. For a period of one-hundred-and-twenty days, the variance expires after one-hundred-and-twenty days.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, there you go.
So like, I move to approve the resolution number nineteen dash twenty-five, approving a petition for an animal variance for the property located at twenty-five thirty-three Port Street, Evans, Colorado, eight zero six two zero, with a time limit of four, of one-hundred-and-twenty days on that.
Right. Yeah, she's actually updating it, I think, right now. All right.
Before we vote, can I ask just one more clarifying question?
Sure, please.
If I would like to support the variance, but at a level of three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, do I vote against this or in favor, and then motion separately? The, there was a motion for one-hundred-and-twenty days, and if that passes, then the matter is closed. There, there would be no need to raise a second motion for a longer period of time.
But if it was denied, then he could make that motion.
Yes. Yes.
All right. So I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution number nineteen dash twenty-two-five, approving a petition for an animal variance for the property located at twenty-five thirty-three Port Street in Evans, Colorado, eight oh six two zero, for one-hundred-and-twenty days. All, and then, all those, go ahead and submit your votes. And that motion passes five to two. All right. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Next item on our agenda, item number seven B, consideration of guaranteed maximum price GMP contract amendment with FCI Constructors Incorporated for the construction of the Evans Police Station. We'll hear from staff.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council, Brian Stone, Economic Development Director. Tonight, I'm here for the consideration of a contract amendment with FCI Constructors for a guaranteed maximum price for the new Evans Police Station. As you're aware, this, this project's been going on for some time, and this is a big milestone for our community. In 2022, City Council approved contracts with D2C Architects for the design, as well as the Arteia Group for our project management. At that time, the city chose a construction manager, general contractor approach to ensure that we can control costs, schedule certainty, and collaboration of design with a contractor and the design team. After a competitive bid process, including qualifications, interviews, and fee evaluations, FCI Constructors was unanimously chosen for the CMGC. Before tonight's amendment, several steps have already been taken place to keep this project moving forward. As, as I mentioned, we, we selected FCI, and that was back in January, for the engineering services for the design portion. The second two, one came in April for the engineering of the structural precast materials. And then the last one we did was in August for the early procurement of those long-lead items for the station. So with those steps being finalized, as well as the design at a hundred percent, we're ready to go into full construction. So like I mentioned, design is now at a hundred percent complete. FCI has found subcontractors and finalized all of those bids, and has submitted a guaranteed max price for the police station of twenty-four million, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, which is below our initial projections for this project. This GMP includes nineteen million, six-hundred thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars for the amendment this evening for the remaining construction services, as well as the previous pre-construction procurement that we just discussed. As a city and staff, we are requesting an additional three percent contingency of approximately seven, or of approximately three percent contingency, which is about seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. And this is really just to cover those unforeseen items, design adjustment, cost escalations, as well as tariffs. And this would all be based on city manager approval, for a total construction cost of twenty-five million, fourteen thousand, two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. So as we've discussed over the years, the overall project budget, this GMP stays within that. The funding sources that we have is we use a portion of the general fund reserves for the design, a portion of the design, as well as land acquisition. We had some available funds from the food tax, and then a large portion of this will be from the bond proceeds, which will be repaid from the food tax with no reliance on the general fund for this construction. With the bond proceeds, any unused funds will be able to reimburse the general fund for those additional expenses early on in the project. So this project remains under budget and on schedule for a fall 2026 completion. Staff would recommend approval of the GMP to FCI Constructors, as well as the city contingency of three percent with city manager approval. This action finalized construction costs and allows FCI to proceed fully with construction. This is, is a big milestone for our community, for the public safety, as well as for the community as a whole. I thank you guys for your continued support through this process. It really has been, been a journey and a great one, and great things to come. So with that, we do have representation from FCI, as well as the Arteia Group. They have been instrumental in this. Steve Roddemaker, the estimator from FCI, really put a pencil to the paper. When we, when we selected all three of these firms, we wanted them to be a part of the team, and we really have that. The, the time and commitment that he has spent on this really makes it a project that, that they, that we're proud of, but we also feel like what we're getting for is the best for our community and taxpayer dollars. So I thank both of them for their time. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Before we get into questions or comments, do you have, anything you guys want to add to the conversation? Are you guys good? Big night. Yes, it definitely is, for sure. All right. See, Councilmember Delaney?
Yes, so it is big night. I'm very excited. My one question that I was actually very surprised by is our three percent contingency. Are we confident that's enough and that we're not gonna be coming back later? Because just given, you said it, and so I'm really happy that was included, but given tariffs and what that can do to structural steel and stuff like that, I just, is that three percent a reasonable contingency? And no, I'm not asking to spend more money, but.
No, and I appreciate that so much, you know, and I thought the same thing when, when, earlier today, we were asking for a higher contingency amount. Really, with this guaranteed max price, they see very limited variance changes within, within this total cost. With FCI, they have a contingency as well. So they have a little bit of room where they can make that decision without having to get city manager approval for some of those things. But I truly believe, and Steve, if, if you want to, please, that'd be great. Like I said, he's put a ton of time and effort into this and understands this GMP model fully.
Thanks. As Brian was stating, we actually do have a little bit of contingency within that general, our GMP. And we've already vetted all of the subcontractors and are in the process of writing contracts to them now. So we've had them agree to their numbers, and we've been through the process of asking them what they foresee for escalation as well. We do have a great group of subcontractors that we have a lot of experience with. We also have some local participation, too, that I think is gonna really add to the quality of the project. But yeah, we've, we've thought all of that through, and the additional three percent from the city, I think, would just be just a little icing on the cake to make sure nothing really crazy happens. But tariffs are unknown, but we do have a fair amount of confidence that we're in good shape with the number we're presenting.
Perfect. That's all I had.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, Councilmember Johnson? If you go ahead and go ahead with your question or comment.
So my question, my question again has been, as always, the sustainability. I know we have like a spec list here, so it's like all the things that are going into this building. So I'm just curious, like considering tariffs and yes, the cost of things, what are we doing to mitigate costs and being efficient on the items that we're purchasing?
So it's, it's a really unique build, and I wish you would have been here for that when D2C was here, when we did that modeling. So if you want, I'd be happy to schedule a virtual meeting with them to explain that a lot better than I can. The precast building is a phenomenal build, and I'm very interested to see how this goes. From the efficiencies of the insulation that is compacted within the two side walls, and it goes vertical, is it a lot more efficient, like we talked about the HVAC control system? Is it a lot more efficient, like we talked about the HVAC control systems, zero escaping, non-potable water system? I mean, there's a, a, a large, the lighting control system, I mean, there's just all kinds of different things that have been put into place that, again, we're not going for the lead certificates, but with meeting all of those marks, we would have enough qualifying points for that. So again, I think I can talk to that further if we were to go through the, that list that I didn't bring with me tonight, as well as the virtual tour with D two C or Architects for you to get a better understanding of that. But it is a building that we are, are definitely considering that. And anytime you talk to chief and if there's anything that we can do for efficiencies or the sustainability, this is a, a building that we're looking at fifty to a hundred years and not something that we're going to be replaced. So we're looking at right sizing it now, as well as expandability, but also building it right.
And then based off that information, since you already spoke to it, what do you feel that, that efficiency looks like for the building itself? Like, what do you think it's going to save, you know, the city?
Yeah, that's hard to say. I mean, we can, we can do projections of what an energy efficient system, HVAC system does, the lighting was, is all going to be lighting control, it's a twenty-four hour operational facility, so, but it'll all be lighting control. So it'll be censored, so as you, you come in and that, to speak to a dollar amount, I don't know that I can put a dollar amount to that.
Not even a dollar amount, just in energy, you know?
I, I couldn't do that either. I, I mean, I can talk to our engineers and, and get you some, some clarification on that, but I, I, I can't provide that information this evening.
It's just been, it would have been great to have like the spec list, but also to see those kind of components in, as a whole package, because again, it's like we want to be cost effective and show our community how we are helping and to be cost effective as well throughout this entire process. So if possible...
Yeah, let, let's talk further offline. Like I said, even from the crushing of the asphalt that they're doing locally and, and I mean, of concrete and recycling that and reusing it, I mean, there's so many different pieces that we can, we can get that list back out and, and share with you and then provide additional details as we have that conversation.
Thank you.
Alright, seeing no additional questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion. I have a motion and a second to approve the guaranteed, I have a motion and a second to approve the guaranteed maximum price amendment to the contract with FCI Constructors Incorporated, an amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars, nineteen thousand, whoa, whoa, nineteen million, six hundred thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars, bringing the construction cost to twenty-four million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars for the construction of the new Evans Police Station and the remodel of the existing police station and authorize the city controlled contingency of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand to be used with the city manager approval under his purchasing authority for a total construction budget of twenty-five million, fourteen thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and authorize the mayor to execute the contract amendment. And that motion carries seven nothing. Alright, thanks Brian, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda, consideration of Evans Ditch Forty-Ninth Street Culver Emergency Repair Construction Contract, we'll hear from staff. Leah, thank you.
Good evening, Ty Boreski, Public Works and Utilities Director, adding to our work session presentation for the Forty-Ninth Street Culver Emergency Repair Construction Contract. So I recently updated council that we had reached our sixty percent engineering design for the Culver project. Based on some of the complexities in the area, this was the opportunity, our engineering staff and our contractor wanted to move forward with the solicitation for construction of the Culver itself, knowing that if we bring them on early, they can be involved in part of the pre-construction services, help with some of the constructibility review, and then start work on, in a timely and efficient manner. As we discussed in the work session, as part of this bid, we also had three alternates, the first being a storm sewer extension. So that's a, a storm water connection north, on the north side of Forty-Ninth Street, that would bring storm water from west to east and no longer have the storm water discharging directly to the ditch. The second was a bid alternate for cold patching, so this would allow us to have an allowance for cold patching of the roadway itself. So in the event we can't access, you know, normal asphalt based on timing, we can do some temporary measures to get Forty-Ninth Street reopened. And bid alternate three was the addition of guardrails. These guardrails would protect both the community's motorists and our infrastructure that we are paying a pretty penny to have installed. So the city advertised this project on nine twenty-two via BidNet, I think, sorry, in the staff report, we have the wrong year. We had the pre-proposal meeting on nine twenty-nine with sixteen contractors in attendance, which is a, a great showing, that's exciting. And we received ten bids by the ten-ten deadline, which are summarized in the staff report. Mountain Constructors was the low qualified bid. The city has a, has a great recent history working with them. They were, were key to our emergency repair efforts on Forty-Ninth Street, Sixty-Fifth Avenue, County Road Thirty-three, all of the work holding up well, and they're really easy to work with and work well with our operations folks. So excited by the number of bidders and excited by them coming in with the low qualified price. Looking at the finances, I know we went into quite a bit of detail on this in the work session, we've spent just over a hundred thousand dollars for project engineering, the original seventy-six thousand with an amendment for the, the engineering associated with the alternates. So in the staff report, you can see the breakdown of mountains bid by base bid, which is based on that sixty percent design. Then the three bid alternates are, are listed, of which staff is recommending we move forward with all three. Given that we are making this, this contract at the sixty percent side, we added a fifteen percent design completion allowance. So that will allow the city with, with extensive oversight to have a, a pocket of money available if fixed materials change sometime between the sixty percent and final design. And then based on the extensive utility conflicts in the area, including our, our wastewater force mains that are, are buried in flow fill and we're not exactly sure of the depth of the pipe themselves, we wanted to make sure we had a fifteen percent project contingency. It's just a really tight place to work, we are on a tight timeline and we're doing work over the winter. So for those reasons, we have a, the design completion allowance and the, the contingency on top. We are also anticipating there will be an additional roughly sixty thousand dollars associated with the construction management and inspection services for this project, given that will fall within our city manager's procurement limits. That will not come to city council, but I wanted you all to be aware that that will be baked into the ultimate project cost. So staff is recommending we'll move forward with the bid, all alternates, the design completion allowance, and a fifteen percent project contingency. So I'm going to open it up for any questions.
Great, thank you Ty, appreciate it. Alright, any questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Alright, I have a motion and a second to award the Evans Ditch Forty-Ninth Street Culver Emergency Repair Construction Contract in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars to Mountain Constructors Incorporated with a fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and one dollar change, or sorry, design completion allowance and sixty-eight thousand dollar project contingency for a not to exceed amount of five hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred dollars. Go ahead and submit your votes. And that motion carries seven nothing. Thank you, Ty, appreciate it. Alright, next item on our agenda, report, city manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council, just a couple of things for you tonight. First off, Thirty-seventh Street is scheduled for completion this Friday, November seventh, so we are certainly working towards that. I know the engineering team, Ty was briefing me on a, on a slight adjustment that they're working on at the intersection of Thirty-seventh and Thirty-Fifth to align traffic, so hopefully, hopefully we don't experience any delays because of that. Right now, we're scheduled for this Friday, November seventh, weather permitting, for that opening to traffic. Prairie View Doc, Prairie View Drive is scheduled for completion by November fourteenth, weather permitting. There was a slight delay on this project, Tammy, you'd asked me about this earlier. A slight delay on this project because of a u- a utility repair under the roadway, so that is what has caused the delay in that. They'll go through finishing the top cap of asphalt, stripings, signage, all that good stuff. So hopefully, no later than November fourteenth is what we're planning for right now. Renaissance Park is nearly completed with the final layer of soft serving, soft surface having been poured last week. The soft surface is in the process of curing. I anticipate, Ty, unless you have any additional information, I anticipate that the fence will come down at the end of this week or early next week. Hunter's Reserve Park, aerospace, Arrowhead Open Space, and Evans Ditch Trail are at or nearing completion as well. Staff are planning a ribbon cutting event to commemorate the opening or reopening of these public facilities, more information will be provided as that becomes available. The new McDonald's at the Evans Junction is open for business. We'll be celebrating the grand opening tomorrow, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five at one P M, so that's certainly a huge milestone for us as we've gone through that, that process to redevelop that southwest corner of Thirty-first and Highway Eighty-five. And then lastly, we have planned the holiday lighting ceremony for Friday, November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five at five thirty P M here at the Evans Community Complex. Mr. Mayor, that is all I have tonight.
Great, thank you Cody, appreciate it. Alright, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything, I'll see you in executive session.
Awesome, great, thank you. Alright, next up, council discussion. I am not seeing...
I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to...
By, while you're doing it, go ahead and, go ahead and, go ahead, Councilmember.
I know, I did it and it kicked me out.
How was it first?
No.
It's not, and it kicked me out.
So first thing I'd like to say to the public tomorrow is, election day, encourage everybody to go out and vote. I went out today and voted, so if you haven't voted via mail, I do encourage you, that's your way to get your voice heard in this community. Secondly, and more importantly, I think that the variance discussion we had tonight points to a potential lack of clarity inside of the city code. And what I was wondering is if we didn't want to ask, have some time set aside that we could discuss how to fix, how to fix the language that, that was there? Because we could either get rid of variances altogether, I'm not sure I'm for that, but the reality of the situation is, is the guidance that the code provides in those three very broad and vague statements doesn't give us a very good idea of what, what we need. For instance, I asked him how big his yard is, I would have liked to know, hey, my, the dimensions of my yard is blah, you know? That should be part of the application process because in the actual ordinance itself, when we're talking about acre larger things, we have a requirement that even a fowl need to have a hundred square feet. So I think that would have been a very important thing to have, but we, it wasn't required of them. And all I can do is I can read and say, what is the spirit of the law, spirit of the law is not what it says, but basically that's what it means, you know? And say that, hey, I don't think that, you know?
It's, it's not on the coun- why, I agree with you, it's not on the council to make his case, it's his case to make it to us. And if he does not provide the relevant information, that's something that we don't need to require, that's something they need to require to us, but continue.
Sorry, yeah, no, that's fine. But I just, I think that there could be some clarity because, you know, when somebody comes and asks for a liquor license, which is a different form of quasi judicial thing, there are very explicit, you know, benchmarks that they make and basically, once it comes to us, if they've met all of those, we say yes, because we have to. The, the problem I think with the code language is there's nothing that determines what that, yes, you say yes in this case and no, you don't say, no, yes in this case, or, and, or no, you should say no in this case. And the problem is, is that leaves it to the council to try to figure out this archaic, what was the intent of all of this? And so I, I don't know, I would just support either talking about removing the variance altogether and just getting rid of it, or, you know, re, working with, ha- having staff come up with, when I say staff, drew, having Drew come up with a few alternative ways to make this process more cut and dry what the council should do when it comes to us.
Councilmember Johnson?
I have a few things, but on your topic, I do agree, I think it's also important for the city to provide clarity for someone to come in and request a variance and have enough information to be able to also support their stance. Typically, when it comes to government situations or concerns or even processes, typically people don't know and as a city, we should help our community navigate that process and make it easy for them to be able to advocate for themselves or for something that they feel very strongly about. And that's part of our civic engagement to be able to also provide that educational component to our community, as we have been talking about every time we, people don't come to us, but then when they do come to us, if we don't provide the necessary information, access to information that they need, then that makes it difficult. And so again, it's, people are not going to reach out when we're not that helpful. So that's all I have to say about that, but I do, I, I agree with revisiting that. So I have a few things. One thing I want to say, I attended the Friends of a Woman's Place Gala, I am a part of that board, and I just want to congratulate Celeste Ewer, she is with Envision, she's an Evans, Executive Director of Envision, and she got the Outstanding Women of Well County Award. So congratulations to her, so I can, I wanted to acknowledge that. I also wanted to mention that Canciones Para Ti, which was a Dia de los Muertos concert with a guest conductor, Diego Barbosa Vazquez, happened this weekend, it was amazing, the community came out, over eight hundred participants. I worked with, I also was a part of the advisory committee for that, and I worked with the Executive Director of the Greeley Philharmonic, and he reached out to the schools here and provided comp tickets and also discount tickets for our community so our students can go to that. In addition to those two things, those are great things that happened. The last thing I wanted to speak to is also the High Plains Library. I went to visit the High Plains Library to post some of the, the posters for Canciones Para Ti, and I had a discussion with Rita, I believe she is the Regional Manager for High Plains, and just kind of discussing the way, kind of have an aberrant relationship with the, with the library, especially Riverside, since it's like across the road, they, you know, they would like to have more presence and also more attention to the library and ensuring that its cleanliness, that, you know, the, the little niches that we have are maintained as well as finding ways to bring community and utilizing the space that we have more effectively. Granted, the understanding is, you know, parties and alcohol is not, but you, you being creative and bringing more patrons to that area to visit. Also another thing, considering the situation with SNAP benefits not being processed, the High Plains Library is providing snacks for students, so when students exit the school bus, they go to the library. One of the things that was brought up, and I think it's a fantastic thing, is crosswalks because students are going to their homes and the safe, there's a safety concern in the east side that students are not able to cross safely to their respective homes. So that's something that I just wanted to bring up to consider as well as a council, just, you know, future planning and thinking of, you know, how we can ensure the safety of students as they're heading home, as well as looking to see how we can expand the outreach also, efforts also for the Riverside Park. I mean, it's a beautiful library and I think it has so much potential and can be utilized more.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Alright, seeing no others, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Did, we, we didn't get a motion.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's coming up.
Yeah, it's being kind of weird, but we hear the movement a second.
There you go.
Thanks.
All right, I have a motion and a second to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters, specifically the City Attorney's Performance Evaluation pursuant to CRS Section Twenty Four Dash Six, S four oh two, Section Four and subsection F. Let's make your votes. That motion carries seven, nothing. All right, we'll go into the meeting in the conference room here. Anybody need a quick write?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I will note for the record it is now 9:12 and we are out of executive session.